Thing that we think is impossible, all right. So, so one of the things that um I want to point out. Is that uh when COVID um nineteen came um into existence in China. A lot of people in Trinidad were saying that uh it it's that it's never gonna come here. All right, it's never gonna enter into our borders. And we see now, all right, that COVID is very rampant all over the world, all right. And you know, we 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 tend to have the 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 philosophies, uh yeah, call it a philosophy as shrinis. All right, that God is a trinity, hallelujah. But we see here that even here where the 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 word I was given to Noah was almost impossible. We see that the impossibility became a reality. And then what that is why it's so important to rely and trust in God. Because God may warn you about something, God may tell you about something. And because if you don't think it can happen and you rely on your own knowledge and your known understanding. You're watching a situation and you're seeing this cannot happen. And God is warning you about that exact same thing. And we see here that after seven days, the flood commenced. And let me tell you something, we need to understand, we need to listen to the word of God. We need to listen when God speaks, we need to listen to it, we need to obey the word of God. Because something could happen if we don't obey, something may happen to you. And they may very well regret disobeying the voice of God. Move it along. All right, so we we need to understand this as well. All right, the waters, all right, that that was gathered on the third day. All right, you see that in Genesis chapter one, verses ten, all right. It broke its borders and it was the source of the flood. So the waters came down from heaven, all right, and for those who 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 live. Well, all of us, um I suppose, live in Trinidad. And we know the the headache that we are getting with floods, all right. And this is what happens, all right, when the rivers burst, all right. Because of the heavy um downpour of rain, all right, the rivers burst and it overflows into the streets. And into homes, et cetera, you know, it's a very um difficult time for those who probably live near to these rivers. Or even to the 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 seas, et cetera, all right. This is a very difficult time for them, but um this is something to note, all right. The waters that was gathered on the third day, Genesis chapter one, verses ten, so you could go and read that. All right, it broke its borders and it was the source of the flood, okay. So through the 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 waters, all right, that was gathered, all right. The waters that the 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 different um seas and et cetera, all right, the rain would have fell. All right, and these waters would have bursted banks and overflowed and went upon all the land. And would have flooded out all the land and every creature within the land, okay. So we see here that this is something very important, all right, this is a first, mind you. Because rain has never fell from the sky. So we see here that the waters bursted banks and all flesh died on the land. All flesh died on the land, so you don't want to go into the Ark of Safety. Let me tell you something, if you don't go into that Ark of Safety and talking to somebody right now. There can only be death and destruction, we see here, all flesh died on the land. So God what, God said something and it came to pass, that's the God we serve, amen. We do not rejoice in the ill will of others, but we are showing you how serious and how mighty our God is. All right, all flesh died on the land, all right. And we see here that only those on the ark, come on, only those on the ark survive, okay. Um the waters prevailed for one hundred and fifty days. One hundred and fifty days, hallelujah, one hundred and fifty days. So we see it's a long while, it's a long, long while. This water um would have would have um been on the earth. And if you could approximate, it would have been about five months, all right. So we see it, it's a long while this water was on the earth. And that is something to take note of, okay. You know, if 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 Trinidad gets flood out and um the water stays for 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 that long, all right. It it will be pressure, imagine that, imagine city gate, you know, city gate floods all from time to time. Imagine city gate being flooded for that period of time, imagine where you are, all right, it's being flooded out. And I talk and I'm talking about no joking flood, I'm talking about some serious flooding. All right, flooding that could kill, flooding that could that could damage property, et cetera, all right. And we see here that the whole world, the whole earth was covered, the whole land was covered in this water. All the flesh that was on the land die. Hallelujah. We too must not allow the Ark of Safety to be shut before we have a chance to enter. You know, um God remember Noah. All right, we're talking about the deliverance now, so we just spoke of the flood. Um if anyone they want clarity on anything, feel free to send a message in the chat. Or um you uh what I want to, I want to say to um on muted mic, they could raise up your hand. Or send a message in the chat and and me will um reply accordingly. So we we are going into Noah's deliverance right now, all right. So after Noah's salvation. Hallelujah, we sees Noah deliverance. Now, God won't put you in a ark, right, uh talking to you. But when put you in a situation, all right, to keep you safe, all right, and then leave you there. And you have to fight up on your own, okay. We know that the water was up for one hundred and fifty days, come on somebody. One hundred and fifty days, um after three days, some people will become impatient. They want God to to take us down right away, God, they're taking too long with this water, all right. They flood out everybody, everybody die, are ready to come back down, are ready to to for this water to subside, but no. One fifty days, so so let me tell you something. Um you may be in a situation right now, I bring it to you. You may be in a situation right now, you you wondering, all right, God, so you saved me from this, you saved me from hell, you saved me from that destruction. What is he think now, what am I supposed to do now. And they wondering what is the next step, I'm telling you right now, all right. You need to know, all right, that there is a period, all right. Where maybe in the water, you may be afloat, all right. God may not come right away, but let me tell you something, once he send you there, once he put you in a position. He will take care of you until the end, all right. And Noah had to, I believe that Noah had to understand and rely on God in this way. Because here's what, one fifty days is a long time, you're waiting there, you're afloat on the water. And you're wondering what is the next step, all right. And let me tell you something, God, deliverance is sure. God remember Noah, all right, this is not to imply that God um forgot Noah. All right, God does not forget, all right, but rather, all right, it refers to Noah being safe. Now let me let me um explain this, right, this is he translated, this is when it says translated, remember it's translated. All right, we see here um it is really um meant. Uh the 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 terminology here is meant to be, all right, Noah is safe. And let me let me explain myself, all right. You know that um perhaps you you have an obligation to someone, all right, you wanted someone to do something for you. And you're wondering whether that person would have forgotten um that thing that you would have asked them to do for you. That obligation that the both of you had, all right. And all of a sudden now, um the person comes up and say, I did not forget you, all right. I'm going to do this thing for you, I'm gonna I'm gonna organize what I promise promise to you, all right. And we know from this interaction, the person, all right, who who would have remembered. And was wondering if the next person remembered, all right. They would feel at ease because the same person comes and tell them, all right, here's what, I forget you. And this is what I want us to understand, all right. God will make us feel that safety, all right. So even in your city, which even right now in your home, you're probably wondering whether um God um. When 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 he has forgotten you, God has 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 and he he isn't using you anymore. No power, no anointing in your life, let me tell you something, the anointing is still there, the power is still there. God is still on it, God is still with you, all right, God will not forget you, all right. Same thing with Noah, God remember Noah, but it's not implying that he forgot about him. But rather, it it was implying that because God remembered him, it was literally like. Yeah, all right, I feel safe that God um knows and he remembers. Who I am and my situation and my predicament, and this I what this is what I want to tell you. God remembers you in your predicament, God's God remembers you in your situation. He does not forget about you, he does not forget about what they're going through. God remembers you, he wants you to know that you are safe in him, all right. And with let me look at the translation of the word safe, you would understand safe to be what, shalom. Shalom is to be at peace, okay. So God just wants you to be at peace in your mind, all right. You thinking that someone has forgotten about you, you have been praying for something and you're wondering. When will the answer come, God wants you to be at peace, all right, and the same way Noah um. God wanted Noah to be at peace, all right, the same way God would want you to be at peace. Even when the time is so long, you've been floating for so many days. And the water is not subsiding, you're wondering where could I get land, when am I be able to to go and do what I need to do. To go and do something, all right, to go and do something, to go and and live life a- again, all right. And not be afloat on this water, the Lord has said, hey, right now, right, you are safe, be at peace. Be at peace in the midst of a pressure moment, be at peace, all right. So we see here that Noah um God wanted Noah to know that he was safe, hallelujah. The wind mentioned, all right, you would have, and you could follow in um Genesis chapter eight, right. The wind, um I I want to read that um particular verse because it's verse one, right. So let me, let me read that um. Just give me a moment. As there would be. I'm here and said yeah. Okay. Okay, so this is very important, uh that uh I really wanted to read this passage for us to really get. Um exactly, because I could be telling you things and you're not really getting exactly the gist of uh what is taking place. So Genesis chapter eight, verses one, and the reason for those who are following in Bible. Uh or on a screen device, wherever you are using, um you could, verses one reads. And God remember Noah and every living thing and all the cattle that was with him in the ark. And God made a wind, somebody say a wind, God made a wind to pass over the earth. And the waters are swaged or swished, right. So God made a wind to pass over the earth, amen, hallelujah. We go back into the site and the wind here, all right, which is mentioning verses one. We would see that the wind would of course what, evaporation. All right, so is is it similar to um, I won't say it's the same thing, right. But we know that when we uh, you know, we go to the 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 bathroom, the toilet. Um especially in those public toilets and we are washing our hands, we see the the air dryer, the air blower, all right. It would have been similar to that, all right, that water on the earth would have been evaporated, all right. Through that wind, that wind would have blown and it it would would have uh evaporated, cause evaporation, all right. I would have sped up the removal of the water, okay. So we pray sometimes, and this this is very, this I like this point. We pray sometimes for the windows of heaven to be open, we know that this is a prayer that we pray. Especially for those who are who pray um according to the offering, me myself would have prayed this prayer. Well, we see here. That the windows of heaven had to be stopped. Is there contradiction, come on, listen to this. We need to understand that even though we pray for the windows of heaven to be open, all right. There's also a cutoff period, because why. That same blessings, all right, that same rain, all right. Even though um it's from heaven, right. Because Noah and those who are in the ark, all right. They 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 were not supposed to be part of the destruction, all right. They could not be floating on water for the rest of their life. Because God required them to 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 really um survive and replenish. And um we multiply the earth, all right. The water could not remain, therefore, the windows of heaven needed to be closed. It needed to be closed so that the water can stop, so that the wind can blow and evaporate the water. And he does to get us again, all right, the windows of heaven, right, reading in in verses one there, right, you'll see it. The windows of heaven needed to be closed, all right, so that the rain can stop, all right. So that the wind can blow and evaporate the water, all right. This was important, all right, those who are listening to me and need us to understand that this is important. So that Noah, all right, and his and the people in the ark would have been saved, all right. Because if the rain from heaven, if the windows from heaven was not stopped. If the rain from heaven that what did not stop, they would forever be floating on the water. With no rest, with no land. Come on, so we need to understand that even though, all right, we pray for the for the windows of heaven to be open. There's also a point in time that the windows of heaven will be shut, all right. And this is important as well, because the blessings will flow, but not all the time the blessings will flow. We expect blessings to be overflowing currently all the time, all the time, every day running true. But let me tell you something, there are times where the the blessings need to stop. And we ourselves need to catch ourselves and really land, all right, no pun intended, on ground. Hallelujah, so we need to understand this, all right, the windows of heaven, even though we pray at times, so it's true, and that's correct. That I have no problem, that's okay, right, but the windows of heaven needed to be closed, come on, come on somebody. So Noah, next point, Noah opened the window, which he mean. So I I know earlier when I spoke on the window, all right, and the window would have been a a a a area. All right, that opening where light could come through, all right. Light from the sky, light from the sun could come through and hit into the boat, all right. And last time I shared, I I it it very much um reiterated to this point where. We cannot function in darkness, all right, God has not called us to function in darkness, right. And I'm talking about literally, right, and I'm talking about, all right, the uh coram bone. And you know, you have to form, no, I am not talking about, I'm talking about spiritually, all right. God has not called us to function in darkness, all right. So I mean, see here that even though Noah. He 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 did not have um the opportunity obviously to go through the door, all right. Because obviously the floods would have been high still, he still was able to go through the window, hallelujah. And through this window, here's what he did when he exited this window, all right. He sent out a raven and he sent out a dove, now here's what he ravened. And I want us to 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 um to really think about this, here's what he ravened, the raven. Um let me let me read this, let me read this. Okay. So this will be from verses um seven, chapter eight, verses seven, right, so you can follow from it. So verses seven reads, and he sent forth a raven, which went forth to and fro, hallelujah. Come on, until the waters were dried up from off the earth. But here's this, verses eight says, also he sent forth a dove from him. To see if the waters were bathed from off the face of the ground. But verse nine says, the dove found no rest for the soul of her foot. And what did the dove do, the dove returned unto him into the ark. For the waters were on the face of the wood earth. Then he put forth his hand and took a puller in unto him into the ark. So the raven, here's what he ravened, the raven exited the ark. And he even did not even bother to return back, he even just looking. Flying perpetually, just flying through the through the air, looking for somewhere, and it did not return. It just kept on flying, hallelujah, and here's what, the dove, right. The dove, the dove also was looking for a place, but here's what. The dove found no rest, what does that say, that implies that it would have been tired, all right. When after a bird is flying for so long, all right, the bird wants to rest and the bird found no rest. But here's what, the only place that the bird knew that the rest was, was in the ark, come on. The only way or the only place, the only location that the dove know. That he could have found rest was in the ark. And this is what we need to understand as Christians, we need to understand, all right, we can't be like the ravens looking for. The dove know, hey, here's what, I'm not seeing water, I'm tired, I'm going back into the ark, come on somebody. Come on somebody, hallelujah. What is good, so we need to be more like that dove, that dove understood. The dove did not try to make it all day, hallelujah, that dove, that dove, that that dove didn't say, well, hey, here's what. They go dry it all in a few, all right, they go dry it all in a, no, the dove came back to the ark. And Noah took it back in. And here's what, here's what purpose works, because the dove, all right, had a purpose, the dove was to go out. And find land, but here's what, not it's not like the raven, the raven was looking for land. And probably eventually would have found it, all right, hopefully, but we do not know. But here's what the dove did, the dove was sent back out again. And when that dove went back out again, we see that the dove, hallelujah, came back with a olive. All right, so if for those who um knows about the olive branches, we know that the olive. Is usually a branch that that sprouts quickly. Right, it's a quick growing branch, right. So most likely when the land would have um, the the waters would have subsided. And the land um reappeared, all right, one of the fastest growing um. Uh trees rather would have been the olive, right, and the dove brought back the olive tree. For Noah. Hallelujah. So there's something to note there, the dove is symbolic of the Holy Spirit. And the olive is symbolic of the anointing of the Holy Spirit, all right. And we know that the instance with um with Jesus, when he was being baptized. And um the scripture said, they they um saw um the dove, right. And um the scripture said, they they um saw um the dove, right? Something like the dove, the Holy Holy Spirit um ascended, no descended, like a dove. It described the the dove, um the the sky, the Holy Spirit like a dove, sorry, okay? And we know that also the olive, alright, where we get it oil from, hallelujah, where we get it oil from? The anointed oil from, we know that we use use olive, alright, olives, alright, when we squeeze the olive and we get the oil. Alright, we use that oil to anoint and also to to do to ministry, right? So we know that the dove is symbolic of the Holy Spirit. And the olive is symbolic of the anointing of the Holy Spirit. Moving right along, I won't wonder go into that and see that we are we are ending soon. Alright, so things to note. The rain began began in the second month of the seventeen day. Alright, and you see this in chapter seven, verses eleven, the sixteenth, sixteen, sorry. And finish on the twenty seventh day of the second month, or supposedly seventh, right? But um yes, so we see here that it took a while, alright? So you could change this the the seconds, um twenty seven day of this and second and change it to the servants, right? My apologies there, um and it finished on the twenty seventh day of this of the seventh month. Okay, so those who take a notes, know that the second day is really the seventh, right, seven. Even though Noah built the ark by divine instruction, alright? Noah was instructed to enter and exit the ark. Even though Noah himself, we have gotten the timber, gotten um the go forward, gotten the pitch, gotten all the materials used to create this ark. At the end of the day, Noah was instructed, he did not move on his own authority. He did not say, but I created this thing, I will go in it and exit it as I please, alright? Noah uh was instructed by who? By God, alright? Therefore, alright, Noah um understood, he knew, alright? That even though he would have created, he knew that obedience was much more important than um saying that I I created this thing, I could go in it whenever I want. He was only um allowed to enter that ark through instructions by God. And perhaps you are you are in a situation like that, where you have been, you've been toiling for something, you have been working for something for a long while, and now it's right there in your hand. And for some reason, every time you try to go and obtain that thing, whether it be a a a business opportunity, whether it be some sort of skill, some sort of talent that you want to learn, you're trying to obtain that thing. And for some reason, there is pressure on every side, perhaps you're trying to learn to drive, perhaps you're trying to you you you're trying to um develop a new um skill and 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 learn a new subject, that kind of thing. And you're wondering, why is this thing so hard? Here's what, it's through God's instruction. And this is the thing, we tend to do everything right as humans, except obey God. And this is what God wants us to know, alright? Everything will be before you, and it's just a matter of you choosing. But how many of us will listen to the instruction of God before we move? Hallelujah. It was only through Noah's obedience, he and his family was saved. Even though he saw that the land was dry, God spoke to him, hallelujah. So he saw the land, he saw that the land was dry, alright? But yet still, he did not exit the boat until God told him. And even though the situations may be favorable for you to go and do what you need to do, it doesn't mean it it is a goal, you must read on God's instructions. Hallelujah, so um I want to close out there tonight, um I'm not sure if anyone has anything to to add before we uh close, but I want to close out there tonight, so um if you have anything now, you can you can message or you you know, raise up your hand and I will respond to you. If not, we can we can close off tonight, alright? But let I I know that I went through a lot and maybe I wasn't clear with some of the points, if, yeah? Hi, good night.
Could I go ahead, brother Gideon?
Hi, good night, sir, sorry, sir.
Yeah, um one thing I want to mention that I noticed in um in bringing any animals on them is that is in um chapter chapter seven, let me see, chapter seven or eight, boy, where um when he was bringing in people, the animals were coming in, right? It had seven of the clean, the clean animals were to come in by seven. And the unclean animals, yeah, were to come in by pairs, male and female.
Yeah.
The the um, why if all were to come in my peers, right? Where these seven come in, what do these seven signify that?
Right, the 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 um the the clean animals was basically the animals that was to be used for sacrifice. Okay, so the 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 seven animals that they seen there, that was that was it's seven, it was seven, right?
Yeah, they would be coming by seven.
Animals, Noah, and that's that's why I was saying, the the same animals, alright, we see here that um Noah knew the difference between that that was clean and that that was unclean. So you see that the animals that he took care, alright, and you see um in the in the in the next section, that he would use these same animals to offer up a sacrifice, alright? So yes, this is that is um, it 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 is very important to note, alright? I think um it's 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 um really um interesting that the 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 number seven, alright? I mean, for those who are into the the biblical numerality, you would understand that um number seven, it means perfection, alright? And we know that God, alright, we know that God, alright, he operates in that regards as well. He uses in numbers, he operates with those numbers as well, and we know that seven is very significant. It deals with what? It deals with perfection, so we see here that the seven animals was chosen, alright, for sacrifice. And these same seven seven animals, you will see moving forward, alright, when we deal about when he exited the the ark, you will see how he utilizes these seven animals.
And the next thing, right? Um well, we know so far we've read in the Bible that when they still sacrifice animal is normally to kill, offer them up, to kill them and to share the meat. So that that automatically becomes um food for the money on the ark, right? Because they did not nothing really mention for them to really eat.
Yes, 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 very true, very true. Now, um the Bible then specifically states exactly what Noah would have would have chosen for food, you know, that kind of thing, but we see here the garden gathering of the animals, I mean, also see the gathering of the family. But in terms of um being specific to the food that they would have been eating, right? I I don't think that um the the Bible was very clear with that, right? But I believe that um they would have had food, they would have organized food as well in order for them to um for nourishment and stuff, I believe so, right?
Right, because um they um to have seven of the clean, the clean animals were to come in by sevens, right? And if all, I don't believe that all would have been used as sacrifice because they would have have to keep back a peer to further the reproduction. So you know, that is why he probably God typically, that's why God specifically mentioned at the clean and the unclean, you know? The clean for the sacrificial and for eating and the unclean because it have animals that is not fit for consumption. But it's it's still um a life thing, you know, creation. So I don't know, it's just that, one of the points that.
Yeah, I I yeah, I I understand where you're coming from, I understand where you're coming from, because you 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 the trainer told us you're saying that the clean animals would have basically been used for food, alright?
Yeah.
I I believe that that is where the trainer taught that the two, so they would have used pipe to be eaten. And two would have been used.
For the reproduction, yes.
Okay, 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 well, well, here's what I I'll go into this, um the next session we have, I'll go into this a little bit more, alright? Because um this is a very good point and I don't want to to shortchange it, alright? So we'll go into this a bit before we um we go into the next part of the the Bible study, right? But um very good, very good, Sister Lisa, very good, very good, very good. That's that's all, Sister Lisa?
No, I don't know if anybody have anything else to say, you know, so they could go ahead.
I don't know if anybody else, everybody else.
They remind now, like when I was in Bible school, boy, I alone had to be talking and asking all the questions, come on, can I open Bible? If you do ask questions, you wouldn't know, come on, ask questions. And um any house and somebody not saying anything.
Yeah.
You know, I'm going into the the um in the ark, right? I look at it as um being, you know, that Noah show faith in God. He show his belief because, you know, God just give him instructions, he was obedient, he carried it up. He never asked God one day, well, how I coming out or how the dog closing? Or he went in, he closed it, and it shows that God's promise to take care of his people, right? And continuing the covenant that he had with Abraham, who is father of the nation. And another thing that being everybody being in pier. Now, God couldn't could have let just destroy the earth because that was a universal flood, right? But he didn't, and you know, because of covenant, that probably have intention of making that Adam would be the father of nations and his and his um his inheritance would be like the son of the earth. Right, God didn't want to completely destroy what he saw um thing and to show that his promise for our continuation, the reason for everything is being Pierre. That he had um his Noah, his wife, his sons and his wives.
Yeah.
Each of the animals, which was supposed to be from in the beginning with Adam, but because of the fall of man with sin, that it reached, so I think that is why he um chose everything in PS to continue.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or continue um our generation, human and living things. Because he created the earth, because if he didn't wanted it, it was void and he found it was too void.
Yeah.
So he went through the process of creating things and humans to inhabit it. So you know, it shows us that he's a God of compassion, of love.
Amen.
And he cares for us, so to be changed anyhow.
Amen, amen.
For anybody else anyway.
This this is Lisa, you're going good, you're going good, very, very well said, very well said. Um much appreciated, very much appreciated, um I I want to close off tonight, but um I just want to thank Sister Lisa for for that contribution, especially when it relates to the 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 uh the seven clean, alright? Because um I know that that would have been something that um someone probably would have asked, alright? But um because of the time, we won't go into it, okay, um but um we'll definitely go into it um first thing next week. Um so thank you all, thanks Sister Lisa, and thanks everyone else who see people messaging in the chat. Um next week we will go into the when he exited the the boats, alright? Along with the seven animals, we are going to when he exited the boats, alright? And also with the rain, because everybody knows about the rainbow, we know about the um the sacrifice he would have made and et cetera, et cetera, right? So um I hope that you come out um next week, I hope that um you were blessed tonight. And whatever you would have obtained, I know that um you would have probably learned something new, probably am. And also I don't want us to be like getting information, but I want us to be ministered to as well because we know that the Bible um also has a lot of spiritual truths that could be applied to our lives, right? And from from the the whole um thing about Noah, alright, especially what I'm getting, is his obedience, right? And I've I've said it a lot in the first session, I've said it a lot tonight, he had a lot of obedience. So tonight, I I know we that we are a lot over the time, okay, we are a a way over the time. So um I want to ask um someone to close us off tonight, alright? Um I'm not sure if um everyone is on, but I'm gonna call somebody on this spot to close us off. Um I hope that everyone is on, um I'll later ask Sister Sally Ann, I'm not sure Sister Sally Ann is on, but um can you close us off tonight, Sister Sally?
Okay, I'm gonna ask my father, Jesus, tonight, dear God, we come into your presence, dear God, with praise and thanksgiving, dear God. She says, you know, um we have been given the opportunity, dear God, to learn of your word, dear God, Jesus. And sometimes we take things for granted, we read over things and we gloss over things and we don't really appreciate the true meaning of what is said to us, dear God. But we thank you, dear God, this morning, this tonight, dear God, for the ministry, dear God, for minister your word so well to us, dear God, so that we are able to appreciate and understand, dear God, what you are saying to us, dear God. And oh God, even though for those who don't didn't understand quite clearly what was said, dear God, we pray, dear God, that you open the eyes of our understanding, dear God, so that we'll be able, dear God, to ask the spirit of God to lead us and guide us, dear God, when things are being taught to us, dear God. Just let everything that has been said, dear God, be a little seed, dear God, that we need, dear God, to nurture, dear God, that virtue we need, dear God, and be a good fruit in our life, dear God, as Christian, dear God. Let us lean, dear God, not onto our own understanding, dear God, but the understanding of God. Oh holy Father, dear God, we give you praise and we give you thanks, dear God. We bless everyone, dear God, in this meeting tonight, dear God, Jesus. We do not have to go far, dear God, because we are in our own homes, dear God. But we pray that the spirit of God will lead us, will be with us and stay with us, dear God, in your holy name, amen, and amen.
Amen, amen.
Brother Gideon, brother brother Gideon?
Yep, brother Richard.
Just just before you leave, there was a question that Sister Wendy had asked.
Yeah, I I was not worried, I addressed that, but yeah, yeah.
So we will do that next week as well.
Yeah, I I know, um, it's gonna mention that, yeah.
Alright, so God bless and um let us don't forget um tomorrow, we have our mountain movers, alright? We have people from Saint Vincent, Grenada, we have people last week, we had people from Saint Lucia. Um and and we are having a wonderful time in the presence of God. So don't forget to join us tomorrow, please, God, and of course, the other announcement remains the same as we continue. So brother Gideon, back to you. And of course, the other announcement remains the same as we continue, so, brother Gideon, back to you.